I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Mrs. Eichholz?
Here.
Dr. Hooker?
Here.
Mrs. Johnston?
Here.
Mrs. Lewis? Mrs. Singh?
Here.
I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session. Whoever makes that motion, please read the entire thing there.
I move we go into executive session in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 121.22-G3, conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body.
Dr. Hooker, I'm sorry, Mrs. Eichholz. We need to move to adopt the regular meeting agenda.
Could we move to adopt? Someone make the motion to adopt the regular meeting agenda?
So moved.
And now, Mrs. Eichholz, would you?
Second. Second to vote.
No.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Am I trying to make this meeting go quickly tonight? Okay. I don't know. Go ahead.
Checked out. I'm making a motion to go into executive session in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 121.22-G3, conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action.
Mrs. Eichholz?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnston?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Aye.
Dr. Hooker?
Aye.
I'm not going to worry about it. The good news for you is I just didn't make it up for COVID today, but I tell you that so you don't have to go home and you're allowed to enjoy your holiday.
I'd be like, mask to work? What is it? What's the rules?
I would have been devastated.
All right, we're returning from the executive session. And I'd like to do the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Davis, would you lead us in that?
Where are we? Where are we? Uh-oh. Hang on one second. Can't do that without a flag. Look behind there, just in case. I've seen them hide it over there.
You found it.
We found it? Yep. I was thinking that's where they usually hide it.
Thank you. Kirk?
Sir? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As usual, Mr. Kneckie saves the day. Thank you, sir. So would you like to jump from that into recognitions, correspondence, and announcements?
Thank you. Welcome, board members. First up tonight, we have some recognition. We have two special students here with us this evening who we'll see a couple times tonight, Claire Hardick and Harry Warfel. We'd like to congratulate them. They are two of 1,617 high school seniors selected as semifinalists for the Coca-Cola Scholarship. Claire and Harry advanced from a pool of over 68,000 submitted applications from across the country based on their academic excellence, leadership, and service demonstrated in school and community activities. If you two could stand... Oh, there they are. Good. We would like to say thank you and congratulations, semifinalists. And we will hear from Claire and Harry in just a few moments. Also, this evening, Indian Hill School District would like to congratulate students in our robotics club for earning a $2,500 robotics grant from Procter &amp; Gamble. Those funds will help expand the robotics program for our new middle school sixth-grade team and allow those members to expand their ability to compete in STEM competitions. So we're very excited and appreciate that grant. Now, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Jim Nichols for an operations update.
Thank you, Mr. Kneckie. We do have just a few things that we want to update you on. We'll start with our building project. And actually, the facility we're in right now is going to be seeing some changes over winter break. The awning out in front of the building will be removed, and some of the sidewalk will be removed. There'll still be a bit of a curb there. We use that for our car rider, and so we'll still maintain that space. But this is part of our demolition package that's going on and helped us with some significant savings by doing it as part of this section of the demo work. So that'll be happening. They will recreate, though, two walkways that go back into the auditorium. So for all of our events and things like that, people won't notice. It will look different, but they'll still be able to walk in, not through all the mud or debris or things like that. So they'll put some good entrances. And just for a few days next week, for our athletic events, they'll have to come in, potentially the high school main door, but we will help them with that. Even potentially, we'll get that done so that the athletic entrance opens back up. So that work will be going on. We have been having lots of meetings lately around safety and technology. We've been using experts in the field to review our current facilities as well as looking at some of the facilities we're building. I'm happy to report that after a walkthrough by one group who were comprised of some people that are on the SWAT team here locally, they said our facilities are really in great shape when it comes to safety, and they were very impressed. And they are fully endorsing some of the changes we're making as well as some of the things we're doing in our new build, and we're awaiting their final report. So that was good news that we got back from them. We also have been looking at technology in our new build as well as our current infrastructure, and we're getting some feedback on that this week. So we're excited about that. I also want to mention that we've got teams in each of our buildings. Part of the bond issue is to replace much of the furniture across the district. Some of the furniture, like if you look at the elementary or high school, came from previous schools. It was a savings opportunity back then, and they took advantage of that. But that furniture is in the need of replacement, and so those school teams have been looking not at just the furniture, but how it fits with the educational approach that we take here and making sure that those two things work together. We'd hate to put something in the classroom that the students don't like and doesn't help the teachers do what they're trying to accomplish. So we've been meeting as groups here internally and really looking at that. And then although you're not seeing a lot of work happen on the site, there's a lot of investigation going on to our current facilities. For example, at our primary school, the heating, they're taking a look at that structure and what that looks like because we're going to be bringing on some new areas. The multi-purpose room and front entrance are getting some work done, so we're looking at how those things will work together. And so a lot of those studies are happening across our district. That's just one example. But even though you're not seeing a lot of work happening, there is a lot of work happening as we get ready for January and February, which is when you actually will see some dirt being moved around, the rest of the concrete pad getting torn up. So those packages are to come here in January as we take those things out to bid. And then I just want to mention a couple of groups. Our facilities team here, we think about Ken Stegman as being leader of that group, and our technology teams. I was looking at some new software that we've got online this year. Those two teams together have resolved 2,000 tickets, almost 2,000 since August 1st. And I just want to congratulate them on some amazing work. It is many times behind the scenes, but those pieces are so important to what we do here every day that I congratulate both those groups on doing a wonderful job. And while we're thanking some people, I want to thank our drivers, our transportation department, our food services partner, Airmark. They both have been working hard. We created a brand-new cafeteria for our seventh graders up in the landing, and Airmark was instrumental in making that happen. Our transportation department continues to bring our kids in and out every day safely, and we're still dealing with some things with COVID. And of course, on the buses, kids are still wearing masks. The bus drivers are still wearing masks, so I want to congratulate them, too. And that is our operations report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Very exciting now, members. We're going to kind of change gears here, and we have some guests here tonight. I'd like to ask Whitney Buell to come up, please, to the stage, and also our facilitators of our strategic planning process, Kelly Freihite, Megan Campion from Education Elements, if you would join us at this time. Thank you. Mr. Sumini, if you would help me out with our screen for our presentation, please. So we're going to turn it over here to Kelly and Megan to get us started this evening with an overview of the new Indian Hill strategic plan.
Good evening, everyone. Megan and I are incredibly grateful to be here this evening. We're going to share with you all the process we went through as a district and a community, and then share the output of that process. So what you see on this slide is one thing that we think is incredibly special to the work that's been happening at Indian Hill is the way that we've engaged stakeholders throughout it. Want to name that one of the biggest things we believe in when developing a strategic plan is that it is important to bring the people along, invest, and create alongside. So as we go through tonight's presentation, we're going to share the process along with the stakeholders involved. What you can see on this slide is the different phases of work, incredible work that has happened over the last four months. We started this process in mid-August. Megan's going to share in a few minutes around just our all-call for support. We then ended our phase and launched about a week and a half ago, so incredible turnout of the work that's happened. Throughout the process, we've been able to gain stakeholder input, along with that, to help design what the next five-year strategic plan would look like.
So the first step in our plan and align process was this, what Kelly mentioned, was the all-call. This was a form that was sent out to all members of the community, and it was really a decision tree that they got to walk through to indicate their interested level of involvement in developing the plan. Once this form was complete and we had all of the results in, the information that we had there informed the groups that made up the various decision-making bodies in the creation of the strategic plan. So these are the different levels of governance in the creation of the plan. We had the project team that drove the completion on a day-to-day basis. The steering team was that decision-making body that came together several times to drive the work forward. Then we had groups of advisors who offered feedback on initiative development, and focus groups, finally, that were brought together to give feedback as the last stage before the initiatives were finalized.
As we think about this stakeholder engagement, we wanted to share the results of what we got from the surveys. So this was part of our initial engagement within the community. We shared back this information with you all in October. What you should notice is the number of students represented, pretty incredible. So all students, grades three through 12, participated in the survey, provided input that allowed the steering team to make informed decisions. We got participation from over 450 community members. That was an opportunity anyone with a link was able to take. And then the staff, representation from the staff. One of our big strategies for this was leveraging a professional learning day, so we got the voices of a majority of our staff. And then our alumni. It was really important to members of our steering team that we heard from our alumni because you all are so invested within this community. And more importantly, Megan's going to share in a little bit how we really focused in on identifying recent alumni, so better understanding how their experience at Indian Hill most recently has impacted their life experiences outside of this district. Part of our foundation stage was hearing the voices of our students, and that was really important and intentional, both from the project team and the steering team. Thanks to the innovation coaches you all have within the district, they worked alongside of Megan and I to host over 22 student groups across the four campuses. So as we shared earlier in the survey, we got voices from third through 12. The focus groups were focused on primary all the way to high school. It was important for us to hear from those kindergartners, to hear their voices. The big themes that came out of that was the importance of voice and choice for your students, so really thinking about how student-centered learning could be a part of their everyday experience at Indian Hill. The second was around connection, so really not only that personal connection they have with their teacher or peers, but really how can they make really deep connections with the content and the instructional practices happening inside the classroom and outside the classroom. And then the third, which was really focused on that socialization piece, so wanting and having that strong desire to develop those social skills along with the ability to cope as stress comes upon them. And more importantly, I think what was really impressive about this experience is that we really honed in on what their experience with academics, climate, and culture, and community engagement was around this.
So with all of this feedback, the steering committee was able to review the feedback and find the themes, the common themes and trends that were emerging from all of the input from the community, the students, and the student focus groups. They discussed their observations from those different surveys and the focus group readouts. Then they came up with sort of initiatives that were answering the question of how might we solve for this problem. The advisors were then able to give feedback on those potential solutions to those how-might-we problems. And our advisor groups were brought together in person and virtually, and we included student voice in those advisor groups. So they were able to look at the proposed initiatives or the proposed themes and give feedback from their experience. The alumni survey that was focusing exclusively on recent alumni, meaning those that had graduated within the last five years, was answered by 106 students. And the results, you can see up here, the main themes that emerged from the alumni survey was the prioritization of safety and well-being for each member of the community, making connections to things that students could find a passion for, so a way to sort of find their passion, which goes along with the access. The third theme there, opportunities for students to understand what the world is like outside of Indian Hill, so chances to go and see other types of environments before they get to college.
So we're very excited, board members, as we moved on in the process to really hone in on the language that would allow us to take initiatives, create prototypes to those initiatives, put common language to them, and our steering team evaluated the prototypes against the criteria that we wanted them to look at so that we could find things that we can measure that would be aligned to all of our values moving forward. We asked the focus groups to talk about what our future state might look like in order for us to realize the vision of what we call the IH promise. And as we move forward here, we're going to share that with you this evening, and Dr. Stewart and Whitney are going to help me to do that at this time. What we tried to do was really focus on some language over a five-year strategic plan. We reviewed the prototypes of the members of the steering team, and we evaluated initiatives according to their ease and impact of implementation over a five-year period. We developed a timeline for implementation to account for the next five years of execution. We are going to be looking at items tonight that we're going to implement that will happen more readily sooner in the plan, and then there are periods of discovery that are going to be going on with some initiatives, as well as periods of research before implementation with future ideas. And that's what you're going to see over the next few slides here as we move forward. So before we get started, I want to make sure that we recognize the stakeholder involvement in this strategic plan. And at this time, we're going to read through the list of everybody who has helped to be a part of the steering team. And you can see some data up there on the slide about how many different stakeholder events were held, how many of our students, alumni, and other community stakeholders participated. And I just want to thank every person who gave any time and input into this plan. In 27 years in public education, I've never seen so much input into a strategic planning process, and that makes me proud, and I hope it makes you proud. I'm going to read everybody's name on the steering team, and if they're here this evening, I'd just like to ask you to stand, and when we're done with the list, I'd love to give these people a round of applause. Amy Campa, Amy Conderotis, Betsy Henning, Aaron Owens, Garang Gandhi, Jeff Damadeo, Jen Hall, Jennifer Yuland, Lauren Richardson, Lori Kleindust, Manny Longbottom, Mark Richardson, Melissa Stewart, Micah Zender, Nancy Eichholz, Nick Carpenter, Nikki Singh, Roberta Willis, Susan Claus, Tim McParland, and Whitney Buell. Those are the members of our steering team, and we'd like to recognize them at this time. And at this time, we're going to read through the list of everybody who has helped to be a part of the steering team. And you can see some data up there on the slide about how many different stakeholder events were held, how many of our students, alumni, and other community stakeholders participated. And I just want to thank every person who gave any time and input into this plan. In 27 years in public education, I've never seen so much input into a strategic planning process, and that makes me proud, and I hope it makes you proud. I'm going to read everybody's name on the steering team, and if they're here this evening, I'd just like to ask you to stand, and when we're done with the list, I'd love to give these people a round of applause. Amy Campa, Amy Conderotis, Betsy Henning, Erin Owens, Garang Gandhi, Jeff Damadeo, Jen Hall, Jennifer Yuland, Lauren Richardson, Lori Kleindst, Manny Longbottom, Mark Richardson, Melissa Stewart, Micah Zender, Nancy Eichholz, Nick Carpenter, Nikki Singh, Roberta Willis, Susan Claus, Tim McParlin, and Whitney Buell. Those are the members of our steering team, and we'd like to recognize them at this time. A lot of time and effort went into personal and virtual meetings, and we really appreciate the work of our entire team, and again, the thousands of bits of input we got to make this the best plan we could for Indian Hill. I'd also like two of our students who are here, again, we introduced them earlier, Claire and Harry, would you guys mind coming up here to the podium for a moment, please? As these seniors know, student input was very important to our team from the beginning. We wanted to capture student voice, and I just wanted to ask if both of you wouldn't mind this evening sharing, you were both a part of advisory meetings, and I'll throw a question your way if that's okay. Claire, could you talk about what it was like to get to interact with community stakeholders as a part of this process?
Yeah, sure. So I think being able to talk to people about some of the issues and like positive things that I've seen in the school, and like finally having that voice be heard is something that's really impactful. Since over, of course, the four years that I've been here in high school, I have noticed a lot of great things about the school and then things that should be improved in order to help with student mental health, student interactions, and even grades. So just being able to discuss that openly in a manner that I know would be listened to was something that I really enjoyed.
Thank you. And Harry, would you mind sharing, I know that you were very active with your advisory group, I got to spend some time around your group the evening that you were there. Why is it so important for the adults in the community to hear from the students?
There's a lot of things that I don't think the adults realize from the student perspective. Some of the choices that students make, my group specifically that you heard was talking about course selection, some of the social pressures from friends and some of the mental hurdles people have to jump through to decide to jump up to an AAP or to stay in a college prep course. There's a little bit of a push from your friends to always go for the higher group because you don't want to be seen as not being able to handle the stress, and there needs to be a balance in between, and I don't think that's something that has been spoken enough about or has been heard enough from the adult perspective. And that goes along with several other comments that students may have about the day-to-day life, like food selection, like changing food in the cafeteria, and other like nicher things that may have been made without the student input can change someone's entire day.
And could both of you maybe just remark to finish up on what you liked or didn't like about the process? What did you take away as a student? What will you remember about being asked to be a part of this?
Well, I know I really enjoyed having the group being someone from each section. So we had a teacher, an alumni, myself as a current student, and a parent. We were all involved, looking eye to eye, talking about the issues from not only different perspectives but different timelines, because some of them is a former student, but she had her own experiences that were significantly different from mine, and that was a really cool thing to hear from.
Thank you.
Something that I'll definitely remember about my experience, this is kind of similar to what Harry had mentioned, is just being able to talk openly without being perceived as like not as smart or not as able to talk about these issues, especially coming from someone who's still a student, still younger than a lot of the people that were in these groups. Having my opinion seen as equal and being weighted the same if not more was something that was really, really helpful and something that I really respect about this entire process.
Well, we're really proud of both of you and all the students who participated, and thank you for representing them here tonight. Could we please give these young adults a round of applause? Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
We appreciate it. We often talk about the power of 17 with my teams, and I think if we get out of the way of adolescents sometimes and let them steer the ship, we end up in the right port. So thank you both again for being here. So with that, let's talk about the IH Promise. Dr. Stewart?
Last spring, we started to engage in a very similar process to identify some key themes related to just teaching and learning. And the reason we did this is because we had a historic and successful bond and levy, and we knew we were going to have to make some decisions about the build of the middle school really quickly. We couldn't wait until the fall, we had to make those decisions now, and we needed some key values that would guide our decision-making process. Those key thoughts are learners as the whole child, learners as doers, and learners as the individual. When we started to talk about this last spring, I have to admit to you, it was a little bit of a risk. What if, as a staff, we came up with these key themes, and then we engaged with the greater community this fall, and they said, no, we don't think those are the right things? But I'm happy to report, there was incredible alignment between what we talked about in the spring with the teaching faculty and what we were hearing from students and what we were hearing from parents. Those key themes of learner as a doer, learner as the individual, and learner as the whole child really summarized what we were hearing over and over from a K through 12 perspective. Through the engagement with different stakeholders, people started to ask, well, what does it look like to be a learner as a doer, or an individual, or a whole child? Three specific criteria started to come to the surface in each of those areas. People talked about experiences, environment, and resources. Next, those three different areas prompted reflection for the different stakeholder groups to give feedback on particular initiatives that represented a K through 12 effort across all school buildings. So you'll see under learners as doers, specifically, we spoke about student agency, creating new spaces, and establishing a district STEM advisory group. Under learners as individuals, we talked about culminating experiences, practical life skill development, and streamlining communication. And lastly, under learners as the whole child, the initiatives were school life integration, wellness life skill development, diversity, equity, inclusion, and finally, expanding career pathways, including mentorships.
So with the steering committee as well as the focus groups, we took everything that they gave us, and we came up with what are we going to do? What are these experiences going to look like? And so what we want to do for learners as doers is we want to give them experiences that are going to be beyond the classroom, more real-world applications. So with student agency, we wanted to develop a district-wide definition so that everyone in the district, every teacher, knew what we meant by student agency. So we want students to have voice in their decisions about their path. We want to be able to empower them as learners. We want to create a variety of different experiences, unlike Dr. Stewart and Mr. Nichols talked about with even the furniture we're selecting, like we're being very intentional in the different buildings about what that furniture is. We're not going to select furniture that is desks and rows. That's not how students learn anymore, and that's not how we want them to learn in the future. We want more collaborative environments. We also think it's very important that we build more partnerships with the community members when we are looking into our STEM programs, so that we have a wealth of knowledge within Indian Hill. And so we want to build more of those community partnerships and invite them into the buildings to be part of the program. For learners as individuals, we want every student to know that they have someone here in this district for them. There is somebody that they can go to at all times. We want to be able to support them as they engage in their different passions. We want to make sure that they know what their strengths are. You can ask a student what their strengths are, and a lot of times, a student can't tell you what they are good at. So how can we pull that out of them and help them build that passion for that? With the courses, we want to make sure, so you saw what Dr. Stewart said, is there were practical life skills and wellness life skills. We divided those and put financial management and time management and different things like that. We got a lot of feedback from the recent alumni, that those are things that they didn't feel like they got when they were here at Indian Hill, and some of the current students as well. So how can we build those practical life skills into our curriculum? And so we just want to make sure that we are meeting their needs as they're graduating. And how can we start from early age and build on those practical life skills? For learners as the whole child, this is so important. As you saw, a lot of the alumni, that was one of their things, mental health and taking care of that. And so we want to be able to maintain a healthy balance for in-school and out-of-school. These kids should not be going home and doing seven hours of work in the evenings, and so how can we balance that and help them to learn the school-life balance? And to help our teachers determine what might be critical for a child to do, and then what might just be compliance, so going through those. For our character education program, we are ready for this. We're already implementing the Brave Character Education Program in all of the buildings, and so we are very proud that we are already doing that. Again, we want to make sure that our environments not only look into the future, but they prioritize belonging and acceptance, and that everybody is a part of a community and everybody has a place in the building for them. And then, as Dr. Stewart says, we want to just make sure that we create a sustained mentorship program for our students, and we're really working with high school and middle school and elementary and primary, and how can we bring those students together more too, so that we have more of a community feel as well.
So, board members, I think it's safe to say that Indian Hill is an amazing school district that already has a wealth of resources, partnerships, and initiatives that are ongoing. Many of those things will continue. However, when you see here as a summary, what I'm very proud of is that the steering committee, listening to all of the input from our stakeholder groups, have come up with what I think are truly student-centered values and initiatives, and if we implement them well over the next five years, we are going to set the district on the course, we're going to be in the right direction. Not only are we going to be able to maintain and sustain excellence, we're going to improve, we're going to grow, and we're going to get better. And that's what the IH Promise is all about, helping us realize that promise for each individual child who comes through our school system. I hope that when you see this, you get a sense of the breadth and depth of this plan and the implementation, the discovery, and the research that will be necessary for us to realize the IH Promise for all of our students. And I, again, would just like to reiterate how proud I am of the input and involvement of our students who helped create these initiatives, along with our community stakeholders and our staff, including Whitney, Dr. Stewart, the entire core team. Every administrator in this district was involved in this in some way, shape, or form. So many of our teacher leaders were involved throughout the process and gave countless hours going back to last year at this time, when the teaching and learning planning began. And so again, I want to thank you for allowing us to work with Ed Elements. Kelly and Megan did an amazing job. Moving forward, we are going to continue to roll out the language and the graphics package of this plan in January of 2022 to the entire community, and then we're going to get into an implementation, monitoring, and communication phase of the new plan. And again, I want to thank both Nikki and Nancy for being integral parts of the steering committee team as well, and I will be quiet and wrap it up, and if you'd like to say anything, I'd appreciate it.
I would just like to compliment everyone involved, leadership team, and our wonderful consultants, on a very transparent process, and I'm so, so impressed with the numbers and the quality of the engagement with the community, and it's not just about the numbers, but the quality of the engagement. Super impressive. And I know that this is still somewhat high-level, actually, even though there's been a ton of work. And so I want to assure anyone who's watching that ongoing, there will be a lot of accountability and measurement and tracking, but they've all put in place such a great plan that we will be able to do that very effectively, I think probably better than we've been able to do in the past. So Kirk, Melissa, everyone on the leadership team that took this on, I know it was like another full-time job, but will very much pay off in the long run, and I think it's exciting to see the community come together like this. So thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to echo a lot of what Nancy said. It was a great process, and students were the main center of this discussion, and everything that was discussed multiple times at multiple levels, students were being involved, and we looked into how it is going to have an effect on them, which is, I think, the core of this plan. And I'm really, really excited at how it is going to implement and what a great results we are going to see. I'm very confident we'll have great results with this. So thank you for everyone who was involved. Thank you to all the alumni who came forward and helped the district to form the right decisions. And thank you to students, staff, and our leadership team. Kelly and Megan, thank you for walking us through this. You guys have done a tremendous job. Really proud of the team we have formed, and very excited to see how this is going to roll out. Thank you.
Any final comments? Megan, Kelly, good?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for allowing that presentation this evening. Now, if we can get back to the announcements, there's just one other announcement this evening, Dr. Hooker, and that is the first reading of our Board of Education meeting dates for 2022. So, board members, if you could review those and give me any feedback prior to next month, I would appreciate that, and we can move on to the superintendent's report, if that's okay.
I also would encourage the three incoming board members to look at those dates and get with you so that you can make decisions not at the next meeting but before the next meeting.
Will do. So under the superintendent's report this evening, letter A, we have the approval of an overnight field trip for a tour of Europe for 2023. That's for future planning purposes. Item, or letter B, is our personnel actions, tuition reimbursements, and professional meetings. You'll see some approvals of non-certified staff contract salaries, also a slate of approvals for supplementals for activities and clubs. And under item three, you'll see a change of contract. Number four is the approval of several retirements and resignations. If there are no questions, Dr. Hooker, I would entertain a resolution to approve number seven, letters A through B for E.
Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mrs. Eichholz?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnston?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Aye.
Dr. Hooker?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis, would you like to give us the treasurer's report, which is always amazing and well-organized? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I hope this one-
No, it's really, it's been a pleasure.
I hope this one delivers as much as the expectations that you've built it up, so-
It better.
All right. Under my report this evening, I have to approve the minutes of the November 18th, 2021 regular meeting, approve the financial reports for the month ending November 30, 2021. Two-part resolution, the first is to purchase an eight-to-10-passenger van using the Southwestern Educational Purchasing Council, and item D is the second part of that. That's the actual contract with Bowtownson Ford for a 2022 Transit 150-passenger RWD Low Roof Van, $43,465. This was something that came along sort of suddenly. We've been talking for years about the potential of adding vans to our fleet. We looked at some data even before Mrs. Spurlock came aboard the transportation. We haven't completed that data, but what we have determined is that there is a need for vans. Basically, right now, we have a student we're transporting across county in a large yellow school bus. If we purchased this van immediately, that would alleviate that situation, and we would start to see a return on our investment immediately. The reason why it came across so suddenly is because Ford is no longer making these transit vans. This will be the last year of production. So there were 35 left at Bowtownson Ford, who is a partner of Southwest EPC, and they offered a lottery, we won the lottery, one of the chances to get one of the 35 vans, and I thought it would be a good purchase for the district. be a good purchase for the district for the forthcoming, just not this school year, but for every school year that that van's available. The next item on my list is the approval of the 2022 OSBA membership, including electronic subscriptions for both the briefcase and school management news. That's a cost of $9,569. That's an annual membership that we have that's become very valuable. The OSBA contributes lots of good things for not just our district, but for all school boards across the state. Item F is to approve the following construction contracts. Number one is Kendall Electric. That's an S and C switch for $35,271. Nelson Stark is to repair the existing natural gas underground piping at the middle school, Item three is Resource International, performance of special inspections and quality assurance construction materials testing. This will be for the life of the project, $290,000. And then finally, a change order from Skanska. It's an IHPS Existing Systems, I believe Mr. Nichols mentioned this in his report, cost of $7,553.75. Item G, under my report, is the approval of some permanent appropriations resolution. Fund six is an increase of $200,000. That's our food service fund. The reason why I'm asking for that appropriation is that the district is now, has taken on some private schools that are able to get funding through the government if they use our existing account, which is being done in several other school districts across the state. We're taking advantage of that, helping out some of our partners. And then also, we will get a little bit of profit from that in order to make up for the administration of it. So, it's a good project. Item two is the Fund 300. This is district managed student activity accounts by $250,000. The reason for this significant increase is because we're purchasing the field turf that we're putting down at Tomahawk Stadium out of this account. This was the account we used as a set aside to start putting funds in each year out of our general fund. We now need to purchase that turf and that will come out of that fund. The rest of them are all federal grants. I'm just fine-tuning them to what the final allocations were for those grants. And then finally, item H, the one that I always enjoy, the acceptance of donations. The first one's from the PTO for the high school, their junior class redo day, $2,000. Item two is AAA Bob Summerall Tire and Service, donation to the athletic department for the high, one of the high school gym scoreboards. The first installment is $7,000 that they're donating. Item three is the IH Foundation donating to the high school for the esports club, $12,000. They've also committed donations for the next two school years, provided that club takes off and does good things. And I can only imagine the great things that club's going to do. Item four is from the IH Foundation to the district office. This has become an annual tradition, Braves Helping Braves. $5,200 is the donation this year. That goes to some of the needy families in our district that need a little bit extra this time of year. And as always, I'd like to thank those partners again for contributing to the district and helping us maintain the excellent education and all of the other things that we do in this district that make it great.
I would entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's report, items A through H.
Still moved?
Still moved? Second.
Mrs. Johnston?
Aye.
Mrs. Eichols?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Aye.
Dr. Hooker?
Aye.
And I hope that was everything it was built to be, and I appreciate the board and thank you again. Have a great night.
Thank you.
You've done an amazing job while I've been on this board and making the treasurer's office be a great source of stability and good finances. Thank you, sir. Now, we have the NEOLA policy update, second reading.
This is the second reading, Dr. Hooker. And if there are no questions, I'd like to ask the board to consider a resolution to approve item nine, A through T.
I would entertain that motion if somebody would like to make it.
Still moved? Second.
Mrs. Johnston?
Aye.
Mrs. Eichols?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Aye.
Dr. Hooker?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, under Other Business by the Board Administration, we need to address the interim board precedent process at this time. If there is a nomination for the president pro tem, could you please state the name of the nominee at this time?
I make a motion to make Nancy Eichel as our president.
Thank you. If there is no further discussion, please call the roll and signal your vote by stating the name of the nominee.
Mrs. Eichols?
Nancy Eichel.
Dr. Hooker?
Nancy Eichel.
Mrs. Johnston?
Nancy Eichel.
Mrs. Lewis?
I actually have a question. I apologize. I was trying to, so is this an election of a president pro tem for the January board meeting?
This will be January 1 through the process at the January organizational meeting.
Right. So, the next board would make decisions on elections of officers. This is just for the board?
Correct. That's just for those 12 days. Yep.
I was unclear in the motion, so I apologize.
That's okay.
Would I say aye?
No, her name.
Oh, Nancy Eichel.
Mrs. Singh?
Nancy Eichel.
Thank you. Following that, Mrs. Eichols will be the president pro tem to serve January 1, 2022 through the election of calendar year 2022 president.
Oh, thank you very much, everyone. And then, let's see, that's right. Nancy, would you like to make a motion related to a settlement? Thank you.
I would like to make a motion regarding a recent legal action to approve a settlement agreement between the Board of Education and Jeff Heineken.
Could we have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Eichols?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnston?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Aye.
Dr. Hooker?
Aye. And then, we're going to have a presentation, brief presentation on COVID-19 from the superintendent.
Again, I know this has become another part of your favorite times in the board meeting. So, we were going to, we're going to run through an update again on COVID operations. We could, there we go. Thank you. Again, want to just restate briefly, our priority has been all along in-school learning for all students. We're going to continue to mitigate the likelihood of spread with cleaning and safety protocols in place. We're going to continue to monitor local, regional, state, and national data and input from health partners and government officials. We're only offering in-person learning at this time, and all of our calendar activities continue to be planned and implemented as followed, along with the new season of winter sports that has begun and new indoor activities. We amended the face covering policy again on November 17th to run through December 17th for students grades K through six. And again, we begin our break at the end of the day on the 17th, and that is when the face covering policy will expire for students and staff and visitors K through 12. Federal transportation order was updated through March of 2022. I just want to reiterate, we've had a lot of cooperation from students and parents as well as staff. It is imperative that people continue to bring a mask with them, and they must wear a mask on all of our transportation. That is a federal law. And then we will share updates as soon as we get them as we head into March. We continue to have a rationale for our weekly and bi-weekly review periods. And again, for anybody interested, we are updating daily our COVID reporting on our website for people who would like to look more closely at the data. And as government orders evolve, we will continue to share updates with the public. Some good news since last month, this is some of our, again, faculty vaccine data. Really not a lot of change here. We continue to kind of monitor informally internally, along with the fact that many of our faculty are vaccinated. I would just like to, again, thank Amy Campa and members of IHPO, all of our faculty for sharing booster information as well as vaccine information with us. We're getting a really good response. We have a lot of our adults who've gotten their booster shots as well, and that's really encouraging. That's how we are able to continue the operations we've had in place for the last year and a half now with in-person learning five days a week. Student vaccine data, again, very encouraging. Since last month, we have begun to vaccinate our children, and we have offered several opportunities here on campus, but many parents have taken advantage of opportunities for vaccination for our first through sixth graders. So, you will see some updated numbers here. And for those percentage of responders, we've had a really great uptick in the number of students who have received shots just in the last four weeks. That's great. 400, you know, students almost, and we had another clinic that took place this afternoon. That date is not a part of this yet. We will continue to offer booster and vaccine clinics if we're able after the break as opportunities for people to consider. When you look at eight through 12, not a lot of significant change, but I will say every one of these grade levels is up, at least one or two students from last month. So, we continue to see more people taking opportunities for vaccines. Case load data, again, about two weeks ago, we had a little, a larger uptick of cases and then, again, decline in the last week and a half. And we'll continue to monitor weekly the total number of cases that we have on campus. I will say, the large majority of these, almost 99% students, we have had very few staff absences due to illness this fall semester, which is just fabulous. Many of you know, across the nation, staffing is a huge concern, not here when it comes to illness. So, we're very proud of our staff. Quarantine data, again, there are some updates. We continue to be, again, a total under 7% total. And while we have had a little uptick with some high school students recently, other than that, we've been pretty steady here with our overall numbers. Federal data, just for anybody who's paying attention, 72% adults over 18 across the country now fully vaccinated and almost 85% 18 and over with at least one dose now. 70.4% of children 12 and over across the country fully vaccinated. That's a great statistic for schools to be in operation, especially Indian Hill. And 82.4% of children over 12 have had at least one dose now. And then I threw in just a new piece of data for you with boosters across the country. Almost 30% of all adults 18 and over have had a booster shot at this time. Ohio numbers continue to climb and Hamilton County numbers continue to climb. We do still have significant community spread in terms of the positivity percentage, and you'll continue to see that in the news until that drops down below 5%. So, we've run through some of these factors before. We all know now that we've amended the mask policies, so we don't need to review all of these slides again. But basically, we've moved to mask optional because of our vaccine, our quarantine and caseload data that you've reviewed for months on end. Much of the government and local partner health data has not changed, but that, again, is something we're going to continue to monitor and watch as we go along. We're going to continue to look at our weekly local vaccination numbers, the demographics, the ZIP code data, and the positivity in the region. We'll continue to work with CCTST and our partners to look at this data. Future considerations, just a couple of updates. There was an oral pill, a preventative pill approved for adults by the FDA a week ago. We do know now that 16- and 17-year-olds are able to get...
It's not a preventative pill. It's a treatment, early treatment.
Okay. An early treatment pill was approved. I believe that was a Pfizer Biotech product. 16 and over are now approved for booster shots, and anybody that age or over can get a booster with any of those that they chose, whether it's Pfizer, Moderna, or J&amp;J. And again, we now know that our children can get shots ages 5 to 11. That's still emergency authorization youth. You will see in the news in the future that becoming a more permanent approval again, kind of the same process that it went through with the FDA and the CDC. In the coming months, you'll probably see news about authorizations again for these Contact tracing continues. I just want to reiterate to everybody that we have a Class A reporting order we're reviewing with ODH about sending out our district releases. We have asked for some relief from that and are hoping to be able to communicate that we will continue to release the information on cases by building to families as positive cases, you know, are explored by our staff or reported on the hotline, and we'll move forward with that and communicate that once we have a decision. We're going to continue to watch our quarantine and weekly attendance data. We're going to do that over the break as well. We're going to ask staff to help us to do that so that we know prior to returning in January that we won't see, if there were to be any uptick in absences or operational issues, we would address those before we would return to school. So, we'll be monitoring that internally. Masks to stay, that should say test to play. Those items continue. I do want to just point out today, our athletic director, Brian Phelps, sent to all winter sports families and coaches an information about tests to play and how that works. This can be a confusing topic and subject. It can also be frustrating. As we go through a long winter sports season, students who are considered close contacts to a positive case have to go through a test to play protocol in order to remain active. If they do not want to test, they cannot participate. That is an OHSAA and ODH guideline that has the effect of law in the state of Ohio. This is not something Indian Hill created or made up, but we enforce and we have to monitor. And we have had several situations in the last week or so with a couple of positive cases where other people have had to respond and we've had to enact the test to play protocol. We will continue to do that throughout the winter as we're dealing with some of our sports, and we would make decisions on halting or pausing those activities case by case, club or activity or sport by sport.
Do we have rapid tests available?
We do have tests available. We also have partners that we give information and resources to families so they can go and get tests properly and efficiently. And as you know, depending on where a student or their family choose to go to a provider, that response time can vary. So, we've tried to communicate what we have available to all the student athletes and their families and anybody involved in a club or activity so that we can do that quickly so that we can keep people participating.
But we do have rapid tests available at school?
We do. We do have rapid tests available. All they have to do is ask in the office if somebody would like to have a resource. Again, we continue to share our mental health resources and partnerships just as a reminder. If anybody is seeking help or assistance, they could talk to a counselor or principal in any building, and we can try to connect not only with our staff to help families in need, but also to our local partners. One of the things we talked about last month in terms of routine communication that we'd like to review tonight is we would like to continue to use Pickup Patrol through December 17th this week, and then we would like to put Pickup Patrol on the shelf for now. If you recall, Pickup Patrol is a daily reporting tool we've been using as an app to ask parents to share information with us. We've had a great response. We've had a lot of people be very cooperative with us for a very long time. Part of the problem, though, is if we don't have 100% cohort response every morning, our administrative staff, our nurses, and our secretaries spend an inordinate amount of time trying to follow through, and they're losing quality time that we could be doing other things. This doesn't mean we couldn't use Pickup Patrol again if we needed to in the future, but I think that it's run its course for effectiveness for now. So, we would like to move forward and just communicate that as of the 17th, that would be the last day we would use Pickup Patrol K through 12 and with staff until such time as we felt we needed to return to that type of tool.
So, what would be the process or what is the process if a child is, has COVID symptoms?
We have a, we have a protocol in place in our district, and we do have a hotline for reporting that we would continue to communicate out as expected. Our parents have always been really good about following the illness reporting protocols regardless of using Pickup Patrol, and our nurses will continue to reach out to families and follow through. We have a COVID hotline people can call. Obviously, if somebody is symptomatic or ill, they should keep their child home, knowing, again, that the priority is to have in-person schooling open for all. And then also, if some... And then also, if somebody is symptomatic with COVID, we need that reporting to the Any other questions about Pickup Patrol?
Yeah, just to Kim's point, I just think most people are wonderful about it, and they see their kid has fever or whatever. And if they don't show up for school, they've got to call anyway, so that's, that picks that person up. But I do think we ought to put some signage in as they come into the buildings. Please be advised if you have a fever, if you have this, if you have that, please do not come into the school today and report to the principal or whatever so that they can be sent home.
Yeah.
I just think we need to remind, the kids are amazing. The kids are absolutely amazing, and we just needed a little reminder there.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, and we do have visitors coming on campus from other communities. It's just good to have that visual. Thank you. So with that, if there are no other questions, I think we can close the COVID reporting for this group for now. Does anybody have any other questions about COVID before we move on? We do need to address some of the language from last month with regards to the guardrails. I believe when the resolution was passed last month, the guardrail resolution for administrators to make decisions only covered grades seven through 12 at the time, so I think we need to amend that to include the K six so that we're using those guardrails moving forward K through 12. And if it pleases you, I'd love to hear a recommendation for that type of motion.
I just want to at least address, you know, because right now, our order mask policy expires on the 17th for K through six. That would mean, as I understand it, if we do not, if we do not pass a resolution to have masks continue until the next board meeting, that would mean that upon the return to school, which, what date is the return to school?
January 3rd.
Upon the return to school on January 3rd, that if we don't pass a policy, that would mean K through six would not be required to wear masks when they come back. It would be mask optional.
Correct.
And do you feel confident that during the break period that you will get adequate reporting so that you can make those administrative decisions about, you know, I don't know if you're going to get more vaccination information, because right now, the vaccination rate is pretty low because they just became eligible for shots?
We'll continue to monitor all of the data and collect it weekly, and just as we have been. And the cabinet, you know, if we need to review something with the team prior to the 3rd, we would do it the week prior, and I could communicate out any changes if there was anything necessary. But yes, I will have the data.
And if I understand it, if, like, for some reason, the state passed a emergency mandate, you all, it's fine, it's state law, so you just do it.
That's part of the guardrails that were put in place-
Right.
...is that we would have to respond to anything that was a mandate.
Okay. So would somebody like to make that motion, or do we want to have public commentary first?
Well, public commentary.
Let's go ahead and see. Is there any public commentary? There is none. Would someone like to make that motion?
Okay. Yeah, I would just make the motion that pursuant to the motion we had last time, just that for grades K through 12, administrators can make decisions regarding COVID-19 operations for mask mandates and or remote operations. And those grade level decisions will be made based on a combination of factors, including a total number of grade level staff that are absent, total number of students that are absent, number of COVID cases, number of quarantine cases, local health orders, state health orders, and federal orders, in addition to other items that are important from the administrative standpoint for operations.
Could I have a second?
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnston?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Aye.
Mrs. Eichols?
Aye.
Dr. Hooker?
Aye.
The, so then, is, that's what we just kind of covered in 12, right?
I'd like to take over the meeting at this point in time, if that's okay.
Uh-oh. Is this a coup?
Unless anybody has any other comments or-
I will pass the meeting to you, sir.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Amy Campa up to the podium, and we are going to spend a few moments reflecting on our board members' terms of service. We have three board members who will be leaving us officially after this evening's meeting adjourns, and at this time, we'd like to share some remarks. And Amy, I'll let you go first.
Thank you. Aristotle said that the essence of life is to serve others and do good. Mrs. Lewis, Mrs. Johnston, and Dr. Hooker, on behalf of the Indian Hill Educators Professional Organization, I want to thank you for your service to the students, the families, and employees of this district. Through all that has happened in the past few years, and I'm getting a little choked up, Indian Hill continues to be a destination, not only for students and families, but also for those in the education profession. Your leadership, your time, and your guidance are greatly appreciated. You have done good. Thank you for your service to our community. It has been a pleasure to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to spend a few moments talking about each member, if that's okay, and I'm going to start with Dr. Eddie Hooker, our current board president. Prior to joining the Board of Education, Dr. Eddie Hooker was a longtime PTO member. Eddie served from 2014 to 2021. He has been a member of the Operations Committee, the Finance Committee, the Instruction and Technology Committee. He was also a foundation representative and is a former vice president and current president. Eddie helped lead the charge for the study of the IH auditorium theater expansion project during his time on the board, as well as the ball field enhancement projects and the tennis pavilion project in recent years. Eddie also helped define the charges to the facilities task force for facilities improvements that led to capital projects, support for the Home of the Braves project, and the plan for a successful and historic bond levy campaign. Thank you for your commitment to serving others these past eight years, Dr. Eddie Kim Martin Lewis. Prior to joining the Board of Education, Kim was a longtime member of the Indian Hill Youth League Commission. She was the first recreation coach for girls lacrosse, and later coached lacrosse at the high school. Kim served the board from 2010 to 2021. She was a member of the Finance Committee, the Personnel Committee, the Instruction and Technology Committee. She has been the legislative liaison for the board. She has been a former vice president and president a number of times. During her time on the board, Kim served as a negotiations liaison to the board for several contracts with IHEPO. She helped create the first comprehensive strategic plan for the district known as the Gold Plan, and she helped foster new partnership initiatives with the foundation that led to the Home of the Braves project idea. Kim has been integral in helping steer the board past tax issues and focus on streamlining the finance process in the past years. Kim helped lead the effort to redefine partnerships between board administrators and teachers with the transition from a union environment to the unique and supportive IHEPO partnership with employees that has resulted in a mutually beneficial culture here at Indian Hill. Kim helped define the charges to the facilities task force for facilities improvements that led to several capital projects, including support for the Home of the Braves project, and again, a successful and historic bond levy campaign. Kim was also responsible for helping hire two superintendents, the treasurer, two high school principals, and the restructuring of key office roles in the district offices as the personnel chair. Thank you for 12 years of dedicated service, Kim. Elizabeth Johnston is one of Indian Hill's longest-tenured Board of Education members. Elizabeth has shared a commitment to serving children for the past 16 years, from 2006 to 2021. Elizabeth was a member of the Operations Committee, excuse me, the Finance Committee, the Personnel Committee, Instruction and Technology Committee, and was a former vice president and president. You guys make this hard every meeting. Elizabeth has served in many roles and championed the development of whole-child initiatives such as the Brave Character Education work in our district and STEM for All, as well as experiential field trips to places like Green Acres and activities for students that are inclusive. Elizabeth has also helped lead initiatives to implement the Extended Day Kindergarten program, implement later start times for children for their health and wellness, implement one-to-one computer plans in the district, food service initiatives for nutrition, a master facilities plan for campus, and adding energy savings improvements on campus over time. Elizabeth helped define the charges to the facilities task force for facilities improvements that led to the Home of the Braves project, the tennis pavilion, and plans for a successful and historic bond levy campaign. Elizabeth has been responsible for helping to hire three superintendents, a treasurer, creating an assistant superintendent role, and the hiring of many leaders in the district in her time. Thank you for promoting positive reinforcement for children and for staff and for your commitment to children in 16 years of caring service, Elizabeth. I'd also just like to say, being a school board member in a high-achieving district comes with certain expectations, but it does not exempt you from feeling loss, feeling anxious, feeling exhausted, or frustrated, or even overwhelmed at times. It does not exempt you from feeling curious, or excited, or proud, or successful, though for some reason, you're not supposed to show it, and at times, it seems that you're not supposed to do it. But it doesn't exempt you from caring and kindness and gratitude either. For our three outgoing leaders who have led through a historic and unique time in our district's history, please know that you fully earn your rights to feel all of those feelings and more every day from now on. Thank you for your service. Now you can all talk again if you'd like.
I bet you that Mrs. Lewis would like to say something maybe as a farewell comment or two, and then Mrs. Johnston.
I just want to thank you for the very kind words, and I really want to thank the district for giving me the opportunity to serve the students, the faculty, and the community at large for 12 years. I've, not always, but most times, have enjoyed serving the community, and it has sometimes been a challenge, and, but I've really enjoyed the work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Johnston?
Thank you again for the kind words. The past 16 years has been remarkable. I think the best thing I could say is it feels very good when you know you're leaving a place better than when you got there. It's been an incredible journey working with everyone, every of the administrators and staff. Everyone has been very supportive in our work as a board. It's been wonderful working with the board members. I think we've had a very cooperative time together. We may have had our differences, but we always come together at the end, and this is an incredible community. And I will be here if anybody wants my advice in the future. Thank you again.
I just want to echo the words of my two colleagues to my right. It's been a privilege, an honor, and I feel blessed to have been able to do this for the last eight years. And I have wonderful group of people I've gotten to work with, and I really think the school district is running on 100% all cylinders, and it's going to just do even more great things with the new board. And at that moment, I'd love to, oh, nope.
I'd just really like to say a special thank you to each one of you, your leadership and your friendship, most importantly. You really took me under your wing, all three of you, when I came on board, and I feel a better person because of it. I will miss all of you. And I totally agree that we don't always agree, but I think we're good at disagreeing and respectful of each other and kind. And at the end of the day, what matters is our children and our administrators and our staff and the people who work here, and we all remember that, and it makes it easier to make the decisions. We hope that you won't go far. You certainly have all left the woodpile way higher, way higher than it was when you got here, and we look forward to your support and engagement with us going forward, and definitely just want to extend the, don't ever be a stranger, and remember that we've all made friends, and we want to stay that way. Thank you so much.
I don't know how to start and where to go from here. It has been my absolute pleasure to work with all of you. I just want to say thank you, thank you, Kim, Dr. Hooker, and Elizabeth, for your leadership and commitment to our students, staff, and community. I just want to thank each one of you for what you have done in this last so many years to take Indian Hill where it is today. Today, we are the best school district in the state and the nation, and I'm so proud of all the work you have done. Kim, I have learned a lot from you. I thank you for sharing your wealth and experience and insights. I really, really admire your commitment and passion towards our school and our students. Dr. Hooker, we understand how challenging it has been, especially for all the healthcare workers and first responders. I really thank you for sharing your thoughts, insight during this challenging time. Thank you for serving our community during this pandemic and all these years. Elizabeth, I do admire your valuable experience and commitment towards our school district. I'm going to miss seeing your smiling face and chatting about your grandkids. Thank you all for bringing your passion, intellect, insight, experience, and resources to the table and sharing it with me. Thank you for challenging me and guiding me. Serving with you all has been my absolute pleasure and privilege. In the last two years, I have learned a lot from each of you that I'm always going to remember and cherish. I will miss working with each one of you. But thank you again for your service, and I wish you all the very best for your adventures. Thank you.
And board members, just an announcement before we adjourn. We will have the rest of the team joining us in the lobby, and we have a short reception planned for you with some parting gifts and refreshments, and I hope that you'll enjoy that. So thank you once again. We appreciate you all. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McEnneke. It's been a blast. And on that, I would now entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make my last motion to adjourn.
I'll make my last second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone, and anybody who is here is welcome to join us in the lobby at this
Exclusive coverage on the Indian Hill Television Network has been a copyrighted by the